All right, thank you Brian. And welcome everyone to this November 8, 2021, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We've got a couple of, well, a couple of recognitions tonight and presentations. Mr. Mayor is the first one, are we doing, Ty first? Okay.
Ty, if you'll come up here. You may bring your wife if she would like to come.
She's good, gotcha. So, I will turn away from you guys. This is a proclamation thanking you for your service. So whereas Ty Cole during the 12 years he has served at the city of Homewood has significantly contributed to and provided leadership to the Board of Zoning Adjustments. And whereas Mr. Cole's performance of duties, responsibilities, and working relationships were always characterized by an obvious dedication to learn every detail of every case. And whereas Mr. Cole made attendance a high priority and rarely missed a meeting. And whereas Mr. Cole, an architect, provided sharp perspective and was determined to get comments from applicants and staff so that everyone could understand the information fully. And whereas Mr. Cole's term of service on the Homewood Board of Zoning Adjustments is ended, and he is being honored by fellow board members and the city council who were deeply appreciative of his contributions to the city during his tenure. And whereas he will be missed by his fellow board members and zoning staff, Mr. Cole plans to continue supporting smart and responsible development in Homewood. Now therefore I, Patrick McCluskey, Mayor of the city of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby express my sincere appreciation and thanks to Mr. Ty Cole for his contributions to the city and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his responsibilities as a member of the Homewood Board of Zoning Adjustments. Ty, thank you so much.
I'll send it to Kail, please, at the end. How's that?
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Do, we also have a check presentation?
Yeah, if I could ask Councillors Alamon and Andrews to come down as well. They'll be presenting this check.
That's right. All of them.
I'll let you sit.
Councillor Alamon and I are representatives, I'm on the State Commission for Red Mountain Park, and Councillor Alamon is on the foundation for Red Mountain Park. TC Macklemore is the executive director of Red Mountain Park. And as a councillor for Homewood and as a citizen of Homewood, I'm very proud that we have such a strong commitment to the park because it is vitally important. And I'll let TC say more, but first I want to present him with our check.
I never know which way to look. So like Jennifer said, I'm always just eternally grateful to the commitment that Homewood shows Red Mountain Park. Homewood continually is our biggest, you know, group of annual visitors. Last year, we set a record seeing 150,000 visitors in a year that people really needed to be outside. And 35209 is the single largest zip code that we pull from as far as annual visitors. I do want to really emphasize y'all keeping us in your budget last year in a tough year. We were cut out of every other budget. We barely made it by last year, and we wouldn't have without the city of Homewood. And because of the city of Homewood's long-term commitment, we were able to take that to other municipalities and get back into budgets that we were cut from and sort of renew a commitment regionally that we hadn't really seen before. So because of Homewood, not only did we make it, but we're healthier than we've ever been. So I'm just really grateful to the citizens of Homewood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with that, I believe that's all we have, is that's right? Okay, just making sure. With that, I will call this meeting to order, and I believe we're going to start with an invocation from a Smith, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
You bow your heads and pray with me. Gracious God, we come to you in prayer seeking your wisdom and guidance as we gather for this meeting. Give us clarity so that we can effectively handle the items on today's agenda. Let us be good listeners and help us to make decisions that do your will. Let us show respect even in disagreement and work together for positive outcomes. Thank you for all the blessings you give to us and help us to share those blessings with others in order to show your love. In your mighty and matchless name I pray, amen.
Everyone face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Salter, if you will please call roll.
Yes, sir. Councillor Gualtney?
Here.
Councillor Geer?
Here.
Councillor Alamon?
Here.
Councillor Wolverton?
Here.
Councillor Sims?
Here.
Councillor Jones?
Here.
Councillor Smith?
Here.
Councillor Neoms?
Here.
Councillor Andres?
Here.
Councillor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
Got everybody.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our regular council meeting of October 25, 2021 that have previously been distributed. I would entertain a motion and second for, to dispense with the reading and approval of those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 11 to 0. Next item up is board vacancies. We have a number of these that we have been working on. Let me start with two that we are still working on, if I understand it correctly, which would be Ward 1 HEC. I don't think we got any applicants for that.
Did you see anything, Mr. Wolverton? I didn't see where we have one. Okay.
So let's open, reopen that one, and let's go until...
So, if we might clarify?
Yeah.
I believe the Ward 1 applicant was intending to reapply, and he's in the audience?
Oh!
He's on the HEC now.
Got it. Was it, is it possible we missed it, or has it just not happened yet?
It's not happened yet.
Okay. Then why don't we, we'll just reopen that until our next meeting on November 22 at 4:30. If you're so inclined, if you'd just submit to the city clerk before 4:30 on the 22nd.
Point of clarification, that's probably my fault because he wanted to reapply, and I don't think I passed along the correct instructions.
No, no judgments.
I usually email the incumbents to let them know they're open, but sometimes I guess I'm a lot, sometimes I'm the liaison anyway. It's my fault too, I'm sorry. I should have emailed you as well.
Sorry about that, Mr. Gualt. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
So.
Then we also have, I believe we did not get any applicants for the Ward 4 Abatement Board, so I would suggest that we reopen that. That one, I would suggest, why don't we leave it open until, yeah, I was going to say, I believe we're going to end up with a meeting on December 6. So does that sound good?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll reopen that one until December 6 at 4:30. All right, then we have, I believe, the Ward 1 BZA appointment. We had one applicant for that, is that correct?
That's correct. Houston Wardle.
All right, so I assume that would be a nomination by Ward 1?
That's correct.
And a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. Congratulations to Mr. Wardle, and Ms. Salter, if you will let him know?
Yes, sir, I will let him know.
Okay, so then we also have Ward 1 Historic Preservation Appointment, which I believe interviews were held on that, and I would turn to the Ward 1 reps about that.
That's correct. We interviewed three candidates last week. All three were excellent candidates and provided an excellent detail about their experiences and what would be beneficial to the city, and we have narrowed down the choice, and we'd like to select David Lorberbaum for the Ward 1 representative.
All right, we have a motion for David Lorberbaum?
Second.
And a second for Ms. Geer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to David.
I will let him know that as well.
Thank you. Then we have the Ward 2 Abatement Board Appointment. I'll turn that over to y'all.
Yes, we had two candidates, they were both excellent, and we have chosen to nominate Tyler McIntyre.
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. McIntyre. Do we have a second?
I was not able to be there, but I will second that.
All right. So we have a motion and a second for Mr. McIntyre, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0. Ms. Salter, you're going to have a few phone calls to make.
Yes, sir, our email's in.
Then we have last, Ward 3 Abatement Board, so I'll turn to our Ward 3 reps.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. We had interviews as well, and the theme of the night is, we had great candidates, we had two candidates, and we always want to try to find somewhere to put someone that might not be appointed, and we're going to try to do that. But we'd like to make the recommendation for Gabe Harris to reappointment to the, to the Abatement Board.
All right, so we have a motion for Mr. Harris?
Second.
And a second for Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0. And I believe that gets us...
Actually, we have one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting one.
That's okay, that's okay.
I apologize.
And again, unfortunately, I was unable to make it as well last week to the Historic Preservation Commission interviews, but as Mr., our Councillor Gualtney mentioned, there were three excellent candidates, and speaking with those who were there, I would like to do the mayor's appointment for Rachel Mobley.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Ms. Mobley will then serve as the mayor's appointment to the preservation board. All right. With that, I think we're done with the board vacancies, and we'll move on to additions to the agenda for tonight. We do have a handful of those. Just a second, I'll make sure about some, okay. First one is 151121, request to hear, I'm sorry, this will go to committee referral. 151121, request to hear updates from the Chamber of Commerce, brought to us by our council liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, Councillor Harden. This will go to the Finance Committee. Also to the committee referral agenda, 161121, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract and to remit fiscal year 2122 budget appropriation to the Birmingham Zoo, brought to us by Robert Riggett, our finance director, and Melody Salter, our city clerk. That one will also go to Finance. Next item, 171121, request for permission to work in the right-of-way to install BJCTA bus shelter at 2601 18th Street South, brought to us by Barbara Williams of CP Construction and Wyatt Pugh. That one will go to Public Works. Then there is an item that is already on the committee referral agenda, 051121. Currently, that item talks about signing a contract, there was some thought that that might not, at any rate, we got to do a bid, a process on that. So what we're going to change that to is request to set a bid opening and to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for stormwater pipe rehabilitation at Lopredo Place and Park Ridge. And then lastly, another item that is currently on the committee referral agenda, 071121, we are not going to set a public hearing for that item at this point in time because there's still work being done on that, and we don't know when it needs to be set. But it will, we will leave it on the committee referral agenda to go to Public Works, so now it will be request for a referral to the Public Works Committee for consideration for the city to vacate a portion of an unnamed alley between 1703 Shades Park Drive and 1610 Shades Park Cove, brought to us by William Siegel of Twin Properties and Wyatt Pugh, and that one will go to Special Issues. Well, let's see, we've got, it says, it says Public Works, but it needs to go at the top, but it needs to go to Special Issues.
It says Special Issues at the bottom.
It does, it's going to Special Issues.
It says top of the public hearing, okay.
Yep. Senator?
One question, Mr. President.
Yeah.
On 051121, is that, did you move that to other new business to set the public hearing? I mean, to set a bid opening date?
I did not. Do we want to do that, or do we want the committee to do that?
I'm okay handling it in committee, I just didn't know if you needed to do that tonight.
As I understand it, Mr. Smith, is that okay to set it in committee? Okay. We'll wait.
Thank you.
And then lastly, that same item that we just talked about, 071121, was on other new business to set the public hearing for that, we're just going to drop that item from, from the other new business agenda at this point, because again, we don't need to set, it's not to, we need some more information before we set that public hearing. So with those amendments, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Geer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. All right, which brings us to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Neoms, second by Ms. Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0 as well, which brings us to old business agenda. First item, 100921, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a vacation of a portion of an unnamed alley between 1722 28th Avenue South and 1715 27th Court South, brought to us by Mike Moran and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, committee met last week and heard from Mr. Pugh and Mr. Moran about this vacation item. We voted 5 to 0 to refer the item back out to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Ms. Andres and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, I will open the public hearing on this item and ask if anyone wants to speak for or against this item.
Good evening, Commission, I'm Mike Moran, 402 Office Park Drive. We are requesting the vacation of this alley. It is a strength, if you have the, do you have the drawing that we had during the...
Should be up there.
Okay. It is the one on the, the small one on the top. It's shaped like number 1 or, and it runs along the back of the Dance Foundation. I'm not even sure what that alley was, was to have accomplished. We've gotten the agreement of the Dance Foundation to vacate that alley, allow us to purchase it, and in return, we're going to give them an easement down the entirety of the back of their building, which they don't have now. So we have that in writing from them.
Correct.
Any questions?
Mr. Moran, could you explain a little bit about what they're getting, that, the area they're getting?
Yes.
The Dance Foundation?
Right now, my property line runs so close to the back of the Dance Foundation that they actually couldn't get to access the back of their building or address any HVAC needs they have. And so in return for them giving up their rights to their half of that alley, we're going to give them an easement so that they can always access the back of their building and service their equipment that's on the ground.
And if anyone has some more questions, we'll ask them in a second, I just want to make sure, is there anyone else that wants to speak for or against this item?
Listen.
Yeah, come on up.
I'm Carolyn Herr, and I live at 3108 Overton Drive. Mr. Moran, I was just wondering if this access has been a problem for the Dance Foundation all the time, or just since you purchased the property?
I don't know what agreement the Dance Foundation had with the prior owner, but there is not a recorded easement giving them legal rights to it. They maybe had a verbal understanding of whatever, you'd have to ask the Dance Foundation, but we're talking about a permanent easement that would give them perpetual rights to access.
Okay, I was just wondering if this only became an issue after you bought the property?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't know.
Okay, and then what do you intend to use this for?
I would imagine in that location, it'll just be parking.
And how many cars do you suppose might park there?
I have no idea. It's all, it would have to be part of a larger plan.
Okay, and is this, is this easement adjacent to your new restaurant?
It's, it's close to, if not adjacent, to where I would propose to put a new restaurant, yes.
Okay, and then, and follow-up to that, what sort of parking arrangements have you thought about for that 4,500 square foot restaurant?
I'll more than exceed the requirement of the city, which I think is 10 per thousand for the space for which customers are served. I will more than exceed that.
Okay, and does anyone know if this easement had been a problem before this?
I don't, I don't know that it's ever been brought to our attention in one way or the other about, about it being a problem. I don't know of it being brought to our attention.
Okay, and the Dance Foundation then is for this?
Yes, they, we have a written consent.
All right.
The Dance Foundation has to sign a petition, we'll say that, to vacate the property. From a legal standpoint, property vacated, picture, picture needs are property under, then you're agreeing with them to go broke up that all the way. From a technical standpoint, the Dance Foundation has a party to petition to vacate.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I was going to ask Mr. Pugh, I believe you sent out an email earlier indicating somebody else might be here to speak on it tonight, but...
That's the other.
It's a different, okay.
This is next one that comes up.
Never mind then.
So, all right, the, with regard to the resolution, we need to determine what the consideration is for this. I know that there was, I believe Mr. Moran had an appraisal done that was for one amount, and then the city has an assessed amount that is a different amount. Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I would, I think historically, when we have vacated alleys before, we have always used the assessed value as our benchmark for that, and I think that that is what we should continue to do. It is a very clear number, and I think if we open the door to letting people kind of make offers on things, that leads us down a road that I don't think we want to go down. I think we need to keep it consistent, and that's what we've done in the past, I think that's what we should continue to do. So I would go with the assessed value as it is.
Can somebody, tell me what that is?
Yes, it is right there. And... Wyatt, you make sure that I'm saying this correctly. I believe it is, la, 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 $34,619.52.
That's correct.
That's right, that's the right number? Yes.
All right. Yeah, I was about to say, I assume that's a motion to approve for that, with that amount?
Yes. Move to approve at the assessed value of $34,619.52.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Alamon, any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
1168.
All right, thank you. So that's 11 to 0, and we, Resolution 21168. All right, next item, 110921, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of vacation of a portion of 27th Terrace South, also brought to us by Mike Moran and Wyatt Pugh. And we will start, again, with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Much like the first, we met last week and voted 5 to 0 to send this item back out to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Ms. Andres.
All right, thank you. So with that, I will open the public hearing on this item and ask if there is anyone to speak for or against this item. Mr. Moran, would you like to start us off again?
This one is a little bit more complicated. This is 27th Terrace, and it is, in purchasing the Valley Mall property, I purchased, what, number 1722 and 1720. So I now own the property on both sides of the entirety of 27th Terrace, from 28th Street to the Old Central Avenue right-of-way. It is my plan to redevelop the property. There had been one, I was told that there had been one neighbor that had called saying that if this was vacated, they would lose their access between 28th and Central Avenue. I'm willing, and as I said at the Special Issues Committee, to grant a perpetual easement for ingress and egress to the city. I own some property at, where Little Hardware is in English Village, and, and the city has to cross my property to get to some public parking. And so I gave the city a permanent easement as long as the city either owns or leases that property, and I would do the same here. My intent is to have a drive, the drive may be relocated slightly as, as the buildings are situated, but I would give the city and the public, therefore, an easement for ingress and egress across that, that drive. So I don't think any access options would be lost.
And if I'm understanding you correctly, the access would essentially be the same, it may be moved over a few feet one way or the other, but because of the easement, the access would stay there forever?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anyone?
This is really just to give me flexibility in the site planning of that property.
Like you said, so you can move that road anywhere or the other?
Exactly, so that if one building is bigger, the road can move, but I don't think it will move dramatically. It will be within generally that area.
Okay. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak for or against this item?
May I add one other thing?
Sure, absolutely.
I know that parking is, is a hot topic in, in Homewood as it is, a lot of municipalities. And one thing I'd like, an idea I'd like to plant with the council would be to take the money that I would, will pay for the right-of-way and to invest that in the Central Avenue right-of-way specifically to try to add public parking. I think there's a number of businesses in that immediate area that if they had that as employees, I'm thinking especially employee parking, it would free up quite a few places in that area for, for customers to park. I talked to the, the owner of Express Oil who called me asking what I had intended, and I shared that idea with him, and I think he's very supportive.
And just to make sure, I know what we're talking about, on, on this drawing, this showing right now, would that be where it says access roadway?
Yes, there's actually, I think, I'm not an engineer, but enough property between the, where it says access roadway and the, and the barrier to the drainage ditch that you could add 90-degree parking and have quite a bit of parking on that area. And I think then, even the parking lot that's across the street, you know, it's behind Shaya's and the bike shops and everything else, I think any employees in that strip could park in what I'm proposing being done on the Old Central Avenue right-of-way and free up a lot of customer parking right behind the shopping center.
Do you want to ask?
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, you know, we have discussed as a council for years, a long-term plan of a, of a trail going alongside and developing that into a greenway, a pedestrian, you know, access trail from connecting basically Central Park to Spring Park, and then ultimately up to where Birmingham is coming down with their, with their pedestrian access coming up over from Vulcan. How does, how does this impact that, because that is a big priority of this council?
I think, again, it would have to be engineered, which I have not done, but I think that there's enough room on both sides of the Central Avenue right-of-way. I think there could be one side dedicated to the, to the walkway, and the other side could be parked, so it wouldn't have to be both sides of the right-of-way. And I think that would preserve the place for the, for the vehi, I meant for the pedestrian or bike path, and yet could still provide a good bit of employee parking.
And does that become part of the motion, or does that become part of the resolution to make sure that is locked down?
Yeah, so, go ahead, Mr. Kendrick.
Yeah, really, we're not vacating any part of our own right-of-way, so our control of the right-of-way is our decision, not Mr. Ron's, and that's not what's being proposed by his vacation. The right-of-way on Central Avenue is, is ours to do as the city sees fit for whatever municipal purpose you see fit. He's just recommending or suggesting that you take his money and use it for that. That's really your call. He could recommend that, but that's not binding on you as a city council.
So in other words, well, we, we could do it two different ways, I think, in terms of, first of all, I, I don't think it's part of this as it currently sits. So I think what, if I understand Mr. Moran correctly, what could be done... So I think what, if I understand Mr. Moran correctly, what could be done is, if, even as part of his project, if that, if that were to be done, then we could, while everything's being torn up, we could do that, but we've got to determine whether or not that's an issue with regard to the trail and everything over there. The engineering would have to be done to determine that. But we could, while everything's being torn up, we could look into that and see, and use, either use our money for it, or I would assume, give you a credit for whatever you're spend, you're, you're paying us if it's less than that.
Mr. Kendrick would have to speak to the legality of it, but I could see that y'all could charge me one dollar for the right-of-way and then require me to spend the hundred and eighty-three thousand or whatever it is, hundred and eighty-eight, I think, five sixty-three, in total, in total.
The two could buy.
Between, between the two, two right-of-ways, you could require me to spend that much without any internal charges, all third-party charges, which of course is subject, totally transparent, subject to audit or anything else, but if I'm doing the work out there, it would certainly be the cheaper time to, to do the work, and I could then coordinate between the Twenty-seventh Terrace access road and any improvements done, which would of course have to be approved by the city.
Yeah, in order to working on right-of-way, we'd have to give you permission to work. We'd certainly need to see the design and those kinds of things.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But if you look at the map, if you pull back up his, what his request is, we're really getting apples and oranges mixed up.
Right.
I just wanted to say that out loud and make sure.
Yeah.
I mean, I, no harm in that.
If you see, the yellow part is what he's requesting to be vacated. That has nothing to do with the Central Park, Central Avenue right-of-way, which is by, to the rear of that. We're not vacating Central Park right-of-way.
Right, so...
Well, excuse me if I might.
Sure, yeah.
You know, I mean, giving, on the Apple study, certainly that area was going to be used as the access, as a cut-through point, and so in that regard, we would be giving up some access if we...
No, because I, I...
Well, well, but, but we give up some control, potentially.
Well, I think if the easement is there, we, if it's a perpetual easement, I think we would...
You would have ingress and egress easement.
We would have the, the legal right forever to, for ingress and egress at that spot. That would be in place, so...
I, I don't want to complicate it, I just thought it was a way to...
Sure.
Maybe get some work done.
No, I appreciate you bringing that up, and I think at some point, we can choose to deal with that as it, between, if this gets approved, and if you move forward to your project, we can deal with that then, where we have more information about the particulars of measurements and engineering, so, but at this point, I think that what we're dealing with is simply the, that yellow portion, Brian, if you can put it back up one more time, yeah, that yellow portion where it says Twenty-seventh Terrace South, so that, that's the portion that we're talking about vacating with this item.
There's no reference in the resolution dealing with a permanent easement. The only objection I'm aware of was by Harbison Lock, which is down the road, down the street, and they were complaining about access to the rear of their property, which would be through Central Avenue.
But they were talking, Mr. Kendrick, about they used Twenty-seventh Terrace.
Going up and taking a left.
Twenty-seventh Terrace.
Okay, we, we need to modify the resolution to spell out this easement agreement, because it has not been, it's not included.
Mr. Pugh.
Yes, Brian, would you mind showing the survey? That yellow line was for informational purposes only. The, the survey actually shows the extent of the right-of-way there, and it goes from property line to property line and from right-of-way to right-of-way.
Okay.
So it's that one there on the right, that, just so everyone gets it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, Ms. Williams, you've been waiting, come on up.
Wait a minute.
No, you're fine, come on.
So I'm Melinda Williams, two thirty-four Raymond Drive, and I just basically have a question that has to do with some rumblings I've heard relative to impact, negative impact on Rosedale of this vacating, this Twenty-seventh Court. Has, have the residents and neighbors of the area been, just, you know, have they been brought into this and it's been discussed with them, and they feel comfortable about it? I mean, apparently they go through there a lot, from what I understand, so I feel like there might need to be some sort of communication with them that gets their input, since they kind of get short end of the stick a lot.
Well, I think what Mr. Moran is saying is that that access will remain, so anyone that is currently driving through there to get to whatever, that they will continue to be able to do that.
So it will be drivable, it will not be foot traffic?
Correct.
It'll be a permanent easement.
Permanent easement for, for vehicular travel.
The easement can include pedestrian, can...
Absolutely.
Yeah, but it will be big enough for vehicular travel with this.
I think if you go out there and see where this Twenty-seventh Terrace intersects the old Central Avenue, it, it's solid, it's the drainage ditch and the fence, there's no cross at that point over to Rosedale.
I mean, I don't live over there, it's just that I feel like the residents of Rosedale should be talked to about it.
Well, as I said, there is no, currently, there's no way to get directly from Twenty-seventh Terrace to Rosedale.
That's my, my...
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else? Mr. Lane?
Chris Lane, seventeen sixty-three Mayfair Drive. The question, is Twenty-seventh Terrace, is it going to be vacated completely? Is it going to stay a two-lane road over the city? It's a two-lane road for the city right now, correct?
Yes, it's, I mean, it's a road for the city, it's not, it's not striped in any way.
It's not striped, then you have a sign on there.
Correct.
Okay, so what I'm saying, because I, to be honest with you, I go there all the time, that way, go behind, turns into Central. So Central Avenue actually runs into, right behind what he's talking about, into Twenty-seventh Terrace, and that is the way out if you want to go to Homewood Park or something like that. I'm just saying, where, if you're on Central Avenue coming out of there, how would you go to Homewood Park? I mean, this is just a question for the people from Rosedale.
Sure, again, I think because there's an easement on there, you would be able to travel the same way you're traveling now.
So it's, it's still going to be a two-lane street?
Yeah, it just may be a few feet one direction or the other.
So we, we're...
In other words, the, the access may move some based on the construction, but my understanding is the vehicular traffic will remain the same.
Yeah, perfect, okay. And will they pave that back behind there also as a street? Because that is Central back there, kind of...
So that, so that's the city's, that was, that was what we were just talking about in terms of, we could decide that later in terms...
That's good, no problem.
Sure, anybody else?
I just have a couple of questions, just to understand, the purchase of this property, how will it...
Ms. Hurd, can, can you pull that microphone down a little bit? Some people are having some trouble hearing, thank you.
I was trying to...
I, I know.
I was wondering how this purchase of this property will affect or not affect any of the sidewalks that were, because that area, you can't get from Central Park to Eighteenth Street with sidewalks, it's all straight because the buildings are built right up to the road. Will there be space for sidewalks?
Well, the city will retain its right-of-way that it has on Twenty-eighth, so if the city wants to put in any sidewalks, there would be the right-of-way existing along Twenty-eighth to do that. I can tell you that the plan that I've seen, the tentative plan I've seen, actually does a good bit of landscaping in front of the restaurant. You have to remember, the building I'm talking about taking down, the bigger one, is I think right at thirteen thousand square feet. The building I'm talking about building is forty-five hundred square feet. And so a lot of the space to the front towards Twenty-eighth is proposed to be a rather large natural area. So, I mean, I would, I would applaud any effort on the part of the city to do the...
I was just thinking, it might be a really good time to address that while all that construction is going on.
Well, again...
I understand, but...
But yes, the, the space will be there, the, the right-of-way, the city's right-of-way will remain.
Right, understand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the other thing is, when you purchased all this contiguous property, does that effectively combine it into one parcel?
It was already one parcel.
It was already one parcel, okay, thank you.
Sure. Anybody else here to speak for or against this item? Yes, sir.
It's, I'm Roger Harbison on Harbison Lock and Key Building.
Yes, sir.
And what, what my concern is, is when you put the trail or whatever you're going to do back there, because we've been parking by that ditch, drainage ditch, for thirty-five years. All right, so if you put the walking trail down through there, are y'all going to cover the ditch up and take that completely up to where we, we have no more parking?
So, this, just to be clear, this item does not deal with the trail. The trail has not been designed, and that, that's something, that's a future potential project. There's nothing about that at this point, so there's, there's not enough design to tell you what exactly would happen, because that, that would come back up in a separate item that we would consider, that's just not before us at this time. I think the reason, the only reason it came up was because Mr. Moran was talking about the possibility of adding some parking spaces in the city area, and we would want to make sure that we weren't doing anything to harm that project, if, but it, but certainly look into the potential of adding more formal parking spaces back there than, than what is currently there, but that's not before us with this item.
Okay, how about, are, are you going to extend Central Avenue up through there? Or the alley, or the alley's going to come out to Central? Because it cuts across my parking lot now. It dead-ends and cuts across my parking.
Sure, so there's no, there's nothing about this, about connecting the Central, where it's, where it's not, the, the first part of Central and then this, this Central right-of-way, this, this really just sort of barely improved back sort of behind your building and the rest of these buildings, that's not a part of this project, that's not, there's no proposal for that at this point.
Okay, so, will be notified when that comes up?
If, if that were to come up, you would be notified separately about that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Yes, sir, come on up.
I'm Paul Bello, I'm the owner of Executive Office Service, seventeen sixteen, Twenty-eighth Avenue, and the way I understand this is it's not going to be really a complete vacation of this alley then. My main concern is, as long as I have big trucks that have to come to the back of my building, so my main concern is, would we still, the roadway would be wide enough for us to get large trucks in and out? Certainly. Okay, have no problem. Thank you.
Could you sign in, right there?
Just sign in on the sheet.
Okay.
Anybody else here to speak for or against this item?
I was just going to comment really quick. Mr. Kendrick, you had referenced only receiving one letter, but Mr. Bello had submitted a letter as well. Want to make, so you have it from Executive and from Lock and Key?
No, he just had Harbison, you're, you're, he, he just hadn't gotten it to him.
I had submitted a letter on Friday.
Came today.
Yeah.
But I don't have any problem with that.
We got it, it was just a thing...
Yeah, that's fine, I, it's fine, as long, have no problem with Friday.
You're, you're good with, once the easement's there, you're good.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in good shape, thank you.
Okay, all right, all right, anybody else? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I would once again say that we should probably stick with using the assessed value of the property, so I believe, I guess I'll just make a motion, I would make a motion to approve based on the assessed value of one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, nine hun, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars.
With the inclusion of the easement?
Yes, with the inclusion of the easement information, yes.
Well, I'll second that.
I do have, I, I would like us to allocate those funds that are collected from that right-of-way sale for the Central Avenue, sorry, Central Avenue and Apple Study, so that we can at least do the engineering on it.
Sure.
That would do well.
Well, and what I would say is, at this point, let's just make sure we're not, we're not using the money on anything, and then we'll come back and, and worry about the funding of that.
Just had to plug them, put the plug in for cash.
I understand, I understand, but I don't think we can fund it with this item, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Sure, no, I know what you mean. I was just encouraging that for, when I bring it up, when I bring it up in the future...
Fair enough, you remind us that you had this comment.
I'll play a clip for you.
Um, just one quick thing, Mr. Sims, let me make sure, Mr. Pugh, I've lost you in the crowd somewhere. I just want to make sure, the, your number and Ms. Smith's number match up, correct?
That's, that's the number right here, as it's on the exhibit that you gave, it's one fifty-three, nine forty-four. Yeah, that's the same thing I have.
Okay, just wanted to make, just wanted to confirm, thank you. All right, Mr. Sims.
Thanks, I just had a couple, couple of questions and follow-up, I was kind of holding those until the public hearing was over. So, one is, we discussed the right-of-way along Twenty-eighth Avenue and the potential sidewalks along the frontage of these going forward, you know, as far as the city's plans, not as it relates to this vacation, and so this doesn't disrupt any of the connectivity of that right-of-way where sidewalks could potentially go, so I just want to confirm, is there even enough space of right-of-way on Twenty-eighth to, to consider sidewalks going forward? Or, or, go ahead.
Well, what I was going to say is, what, yeah, I was going to say, it, Mr. Smith, I'm not sure if you know the answer to that question as we sit here. Whatever the right-of-way is, is not changing. I, I think we can confirm that, but how much is there, I think we would need our engineering department to figure out.
And, and in the nature of that question is basically, you know, if, if we don't have space for right-of-way, then if we could, you know, look at possibly development by development as redevelopments, finding a way to have those done in infill on the private side, that would be advantageous for us for connectivity, obviously, so just wanted to, to talk about that as options to consider going forward. Also, the other thing that I, I think is, you know, maybe a little bit further off, but relevant is, as, as Eighteenth is improved and the access to the post office changes, how that post office traffic is rerouted in combination with some of the other development, Robbie Mann's and, and the surrounding area, just thinking about what transportation and traffic flow, what transportation roadway improvements and traffic flow looks like going forward, to make sure that we're not losing something in Twenty-seventh Terrace for consideration of just traffic flow, possibly with Central Avenue improvements needed to, to kind of improve that area. I, I haven't seen a plan yet, but I know we have a, an intersection right above that by the Dance Foundation, Twenty-eighth Avenue and Eighteenth Street, so I just want to, big-picture-wise, make sure that we're not losing anything we need in Twenty-seventh Terrace in the future, and maybe we're not as long as we have access, but just kind of want to talk about the way the vision of all that could work together and make sure that we're on the same page as far as not losing an opportunity.
Sure, and, and I agree with you, that intersection up there is horrible, but, and, and we'll need, you know, some addressing and probably a larger, more complicated issue than this. And I will just give you my thoughts, because of the easement there, I don't think we're changing anything about access if we approve this. Now, you know, whether or not that does, what happens with those properties that are to the north and west of this, you know, I think is still to be determined, and, and may or may not, I, I don't think anyone knows what's going to happen with those and how we would address that issue, but considering that the access with regard to this road, because of the perpetual easement, I, I feel comfortable saying that would not, that would not change enough to, to affect anything one way or the other.
And I agree, as long as we have public access and not just access for particular...
Correct.
Businesses, but, but public easement, then, then I think that's...
Yeah, and as I understand the, and Mr. Moran can correct me if I'm wrong, if I understood what he was saying is what he has offered and therefore what's in the motion would be a public easement that would be able to be used by anybody.
Ingress and egress.
In, for ingress and egress.
Thank you, I just wanted to talk to clarify, I appreciate it.
Sure, anybody else? Uh, Mr. Jones? Oh, sorry, Mr. Kendrick. You want to go first, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I was just going to say, the, I, I was one of the people that, I was not as excited about the Central project, but one, once it, it got started and we realized, I don't know how many additional spaces we got, but it, it was a lot, and I know that is the name of the game now, anytime we can add additional parking spots, if we can improve the way we, that traffic flows onto Central, I think, I think we have a lot of great opportunities within, within that area, so I'm, I'm definitely open to other suggestions on what, what we could do to improve that, but I think, just, I'm, I'm excited about it.
And the fact we just got a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that maybe we could...
Yeah, that's what I'm most excited about.
Spoken like a true finance director. Anybody else? Uh, Mr. Kendrick?
I want to make sure I understand the term of easement offered by Mr. Moran, about ingress and egress, pedestrian vehicle, public access, from Twenty-eighth Avenue to Central Avenue, is that correct? to Central Avenue, is that correct? Is there a width mentioned? Big trucks, cars?
It's two-way, there'll be two-way track.
I think that's, Mr. Kendrick usually, I think.
It'd be engineered and, I have plenty of parking.
So the easement will provide, the term will provide two-way, egress, egress, from Twenty-Eighth Avenue to Central Avenue?
It will provide ingress and egress that is two-lanes, not two-lanes, ingress or two-lanes, egress.
Two lanes in total.
One lane each direction.
That's two-way.
I just wanna make sure nobody follows, two lanes in each direction.
Okay, alright. Anybody else? Alright, so we have a motion from Ms. Smith, a second from Ms. Andrus, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero, and will be Resolution Twenty-One, One-Sixty-Nine. Alright, which brings us to our next item, thirteen oh-two twenty-one, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of changes to the landscaping and tree requirements, brought to us by Councilors Gualtney and Andrus, this came to us from the Planning Commission with an eight to zero favorable vote in favor, in favor of recommending the ordinance, and we'll start with a report from P and D, Ms. Andrus.
Yes, the committee met last week and voted five to zero to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation, pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counsel Wolverton and seconded by Counsel Gualtney.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Kendrick, can you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to amend Article Two entitled Definitions, and to add Article Eleven entitled Tree Protection and Landscape to Appendix A entitled Zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City. Be ordained as follows, Section One, in Article Two entitled Definitions, amended to add the following definitions, caliper, canopy tree, critical root zone, crown, DBH, deciduous plants, native plants, drip line, evergreen plants, ground cover, hazardous trees, invasive plants, landscape plan, landscape disturbance activity, land disturbance permit, minimum tree density, MTD, native plants, qualifying trees, public tree, replacement tree, street yard, tree permit, tree disturbing activity, tree inventory and tree protection zone, tree protection zone barrier, tree replacement assessment, understory tree, vehicular use area, yard required, yard remaining. Section Two, that Article Eleven entitled Tree Protection Landscape is added to Appendix A entitled Zoning of the Code of Ordinances, to read as follows, Section A spells out the intent, Section B spells out the applicability, Section Three spells out the administrative provisions, Section D spells out permitting for tree removal or preservation. Section E deals with permitting for landscaping, Section F sets out exemptions, Section G sets out variance applications, Section H spells out tree and landscape requirements under the ordinance. Section I deals with other landscape requirements, Table One deals with landscape requirements. Section J deals with elimination of invasive trees and shrubs, Section K deals with plant hazard, hardiness consideration, Section L deals with maintenance of landscaping and trees, Section N deals with the penalty provisions, Section N deals with site inspection, Section Three, that all provisions of the zoning ordinance not affected, not set out here and or remain to full force and effect, Section Four, November the eighth, at six p.m., is set at the time and place for public hearing, at which time all persons who are interested may be heard against, in support of or in opposition to the proposed ordinance, Section Five, any part of provisions the ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of company jurisdiction, and all the parts not affected thereby shall remain full force and effect, and Section Six deals with the, that the ordinance become adopted, effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council and approval by the mayor.
Alright, thank you very much. I know there was some discussion about this today, Mr. Smith, do you have anything that you wanna bring us up to speed on?
Yes. Thank you, so we had a few public comments this morning, and we made some revisions to the advertised version, so the difference between the advertised version and the version that I sent to all of you this afternoon are the following, definition changes from the advertised version to this, we redefined caliper to be the diameter of a tree measured at a point six inches above the ground line if the resulting measurement is no more than four inches, and we redefined DBH as an acronym for a diameter at breast height, diameter of tree measured at four point five feet, one point three meters, above ground. We also added in specific references to ANSI three hundred and other relevant sections that will replace text that generally references ANSI standards. To identify invasive species, we removed references to Appendix B, which didn't exist, and we inserted the Alabama, we inserted information to reference the Alabama Invasive Plant Council as the invasive plant reference. And then we deleted Section D, Part Three, B, which states, "When an applicant states as reason for tree removal that a tree is diseased or dying, the city's arborist must provide a report certifying that the tree is in fact diseased or dying is a condition for permit approval. A fee will be charged for the professional services of the city's arborists. Contractors which employ certified arborists may provide a report certifying that a tree is in fact diseased or dying. Said report must include the certifying arborist certification number, professional stamp, and other proof of certification." And that's it.
Alright, so now that we've. Sorry, now that we have know what we're talking about, let me go ahead and open this public hearing and ask if there's anyone to speak for or against this item.
Okay, counsel, I'll sign in and then get to talking to you tonight. First, I want to, as I'm signing in, I want to commend Mr. Kendrick for reading through that whole thing, right there. If any of you need.
Some people say I don't read enough sometimes.
You know, if you need good sleeping material tonight, my suggestion is just read the twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-nine pages of a tree ordinance and landscape ordinance, that'll probably put you to sleep pretty well, so, thank y'all for this, you know, it seems like, so Ryan Dieh here with me, of course Matt Rich from HEC, Ryan Dieh is a member of HEC as well, it seems like we've been here, and been through this a few times, tree and landscape ordinance has been up a few times, and it's amazing to think that we may be standing here and that this council may be the one that actually puts into effect a tree and landscape ordinance that will be beneficial for all of Homewood, so congratulations to you all for making it to this point. I can wholeheartedly, as we've been communicating today, I can wholeheartedly say, we want something, you know, passed, we want there to be a tree and landscape ordinance. Is this perfect? I don't think it's perfect, but will it be? We could probably take many more months and years to try to make a perfect one, but we need to make one that works. So given the revisions that Mr. Smith has put in, if those are adopted, absolutely one hundred percent say that we would love to see this come into effect, and then as Brown or Mr. O'Driscan has his job to be able to be CD arborist, we look forward to what benefits this will bring to all of Homewood, so I just wanna stand here and say congratulations to y'all for making it to this point, it's taken a few years, but we're, yeah, a few years, literally, but we're finally here. But, again, stating that, given the revisions that Mr. Smith has brought, I don't know how substantial those are, but I think they are beneficial to this ordinance, I would love to see it move through with those that were stated. If not, I do want to preface this, if it does not make it with those revisions, I will say that we do need to get something passed, we have sat on this long enough, quite frankly, and we do need to have something passed where we can put it in and we can have a tree ordinance that we can actually go out in force and include in the city's zoning. Thank you again, ladies and gentlemen, for counsel, Ryan, do you want anything?
I'm really just here to agree with Matt, and I would also like to point out that the HEC members are here as well, they've been here several times to see the passing of this, and we are excited if it has that potential. I would like to stand up, we have past HEC members and current ones, just to show their support, and, again, we've been here before to see this pass, and we would really like to see forward motion on it.
I think tonight's the night, is that?
Are you just excited that you don't have to come to another meeting?
Now that I know my time is up on the HEC.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, but in all sincerity, thank you for all, all of y'all have done for this, there have been many hours put into this by many up here, by Mr. Smith, by Mr. Kendrick, there are many others that have, you know, that have put their time towards it, so thank y'all so much for what you've done, we appreciate it. Where do we get those fancy shirts?
I know, right? Do you want one of these? Pass the ordinance.
Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item?
So, Amy Mylum, nine oh eight Highland Road, most of you know that I've been involved in drafting the ordinance for about the last, well, I guess since twenty fifteen, when I joined the Environmental Commission, so I'm really happy to see, six years, thank you Walter, so I'm really, really happy that it's made it finally to this point, and I fully support passing it with the revisions that Cale mentioned, so, that's it.
Thank you very much, anybody else? With that, I will close the public hearing, and before we get to any other comments, I'll just reciprocate what was said about the council, I thank you to all the members of the HEC for all the time and effort, past and present members, for all the time and effort that has gone into this and, you know, making sure we get to a point where we do have a good ordinance and one that's workable, so that's not always an easy thing, we appreciate everyone's cooperation and efforts and time and everything, and reading boring ordinances in getting to this point. So, with that, I would ask if there are any, yeah, Mr. Gualtney?
Sorry, I thought you were entertaining a motion. I would be happy to make a motion momentarily, however, I did have one question for Mr. Smith, or maybe other people in the Finance Committee. One concern I have with deletion of Section Six, Part Three, is should we not be in a position where we have generous people who are willing to either volunteer their time like Henry did, or we have folks that may not be willing to come and work for the city and do this, and we have to contract this service out because it's required, we will not be able to recoup that cost, is that correct? Without a fee for the arborist?
Sure.
We don't have to set it exorbitantly high, I just felt like that was, I remember when you added it, I felt like that was a smart move, because it protected us.
Right, so currently, currently we only have that fee.
Correct.
There is no permit fee, but in this new ordinance, there was gonna be that fee that currently exists, plus a permit fee.
Okay.
So we're still gonna have the permit fee in there.
Gotcha, so you feel like that permit fee, should the arborist have to go out, or should one day we don't have an arborist on staff and we have to contract that out?
Yes.
We'll cover that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
If not, I'd entertain a.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. President, the, so the changes were minor in nature, so, or is the motion to approve it with the distributed, or the communicated amendments to the, to what was read in the first?
That's up to whoever makes the motion, but, but, yes, I think that's probably where everyone's going with this. Okay.
That's.
I'll make that motion, yeah.
For.
With the revisions as mentioned, the definition changes, deletion of Section D, Part Three, B.
So that's a motion for unanimous consent at this point, correct?
Correct.
With those, with those amendments. Okay, so we have a motion for unanimous consent from Mr. Gualtney, and second from Mr. Wolverton, Ms. Salter, if you will give us a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir, Counsel Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel Gear?
Yes.
Counsel Alt? Counsel Wolverton?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Naums?
Yes.
Counsel Andrus?
Yes.
Counsel Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt.
Yes, alright, so now we're entertaining a motion and a second for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Gualtney, second for Ms. Andrus, and I assume that that motion is also with those revisions noted by Mr. Smith.
Definition changes, deletion of Section D, Part Three, B.
Okay, alright, another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counsel Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel Gear?
Yes.
Counsel Almon?
Yes.
Counsel Wolverton?
Yes.
Counsel Sims?
Yes.
Counsel Jones? Counsel Smith?
Yes.
Counsel Naums?
Yes.
Counsel Andrus?
Yes.
Counsel Harden?
Absolutely.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
That's Twenty-Eighth eighteen.
That will be an ordinance, Twenty-Eighth eighteen.
Can I make one more quick?
You, absolutely.
I wanna challenge other boards to come up with T-shirts. I mean, that, you're wearing it with pride, and I think we, you know, maybe a BZA, or, you know, the Housing Investment Board, I mean, they're.
They're gonna ask for more budget money.
Well, that's true.
Everything costs.
Strike that.
And again, I mean, I mean, Counsel Andrus and Gualtney, I think, have this item on the agenda, and y'all have poured a lot of work into this, and so just, you know, sometimes it's good to celebrate wins, so.
Absolutely.
Many, many years, I think, Andy, I think you first had it on the agenda in twenty seventeen?
Maybe even sixteen, yeah.
Yeah.
It's good stuff.
Yeah.
Alright, next item, seventeen ten twenty-one, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Kimley Horn for professional services for stormwater master plan in the Griffin Brook Creek Basin, brought to us by Cale Smith, and we'll start with a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Finance Committee met on Monday, November the first, voted five to zero to recommend approval of funding of three hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars from infrastructure inventory, which is zero-two-dash-eleven-dash-five-eight-nine-one-four-six, so five to zero coming out of Finance.
Alright, thank you very much, we got a motion from Finance, any questions or comments? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's one seventy.
Thank you, so that is eleven to zero, and will be Resolution Twenty-One, One-Sixty. Alright, next item, eighteen ten twenty-one, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Volker Inc. for professional services for Rees Street Plan Updates and bidding assistance, also brought to us by Cale Smith, and another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee voted five to zero to recommend approval of this funding, it's seventeen thousand, seven-two-three, out of account two-six-dash-eleven-dash-five-eight-nine-one-four-six, five to zero.
Alright, so we have another motion from Finance, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is Resolution Twenty-One, One-Sixty-One. Next item, thirty ten twenty-one, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Shoal Engineering for professional engineering services for College Avenue Storm Infrastructure, brought to us by Cale Smith, and another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval of funding for this, this is forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars from account zero-two-dash-eleven-dash-five-eight-four-one-three-five, five to zero.
Alright, another motion from Finance, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also eleven to zero, and will be Resolution Twenty-One, One-Sixty-Two. Next item, thirty-one ten twenty-one, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Shoal Engineering for professional engineering services for Huntington Road Culvert, again, brought to us by Cale Smith, and another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item as well, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred, from zero-two-dash-eleven-dash-five-eight-four-one-three-five, five to zero.
Alright, so we have another motion from Finance, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also eleven to zero, and will be Resolution Twenty-One, One-Sixty-Three. Alright, next item, twenty ten twenty-one, request to add a stop sign at the intersection of Salter Lane and Crest Drive, brought to us by Randy Hambley, and we will start with a report from Public Safety, Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, Mr. President, the committee met November first and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the item, the motion was made by Counsel Jones and seconded by Counsel Harden.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us a first reading, please?
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to further record late, traffic in the city of Homewood and to provide penalties for the violation, there be ordained by the city as follows, that every person, firm, or corporation operating a motor vehicle is to find, in the highway code of the state of Alabama, in a northerly directional on Salter Lane, and said city shall cause a motor vehicle to come to complete stop. cause a motor vehicle to come to complete stop intersection of Salter Lane with the southerly right-of-way line of Crest Drive. Section 2, that no person, firm, or corporation shall park or cause to be parked motor vehicle within, owner along Salter Lane within 30 feet of intersection of Salter Lane with Crest Drive. Section 3, the violation of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8. Section 4, the chief of police is, shall erect or cause to be erected appropriate markings, no parking signs, stop signs at intersections described in Sections 1 and 2 above and Section 5. Ordinance shall be effective immediately upon adoption by the city council. Approval by the mayor is otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Salter, Mr. Kendrick, is this another one that the public hearing was, where we need to have a public hearing?
No, we don't have to.
We don't have to have one for this, right?
It's an ordinance.
Just making sure.
Sorry.
Thank you. No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure. All right. So, I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Nels. Roll call vote, please. Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. So, now I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Smith, and another roll call vote, please. Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
That's 2819.
Thank you very much. So, that is 11 to zero and ordinance 2819. All right. Next item, 150820, request for consideration of a memorial donation policy brought to us by Counselors Andrus and Smith. And we will get a report from Special Issues.
Actually, could we carry this over to our November 22nd meeting? We don't have the actual application. That was not attached to the original. I sent my changes to Mr. Kendrick and the rest of the council, but the application wasn't attached, nor was the location plan that was mentioned. And since this was, since Mr. Squires is just now getting back to work, I thought I'd give him a day or two. So, we're going to get that figured out between now and the 22nd. And so, if we could carry that over till then, that'd be great.
No problem. We will carry that over without objection.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the amended committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended committee referral agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Take your pick.
Nice. Motion from Ms. Gier, second from Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero, which brings us to other new business tonight. First item is 081121, request to set a public hearing for the removal of five protected trees from 1505 Manhattan Street as required by Tree Conservation Ordinance Number 2422, brought to us by Thomas Irwin and Scott Cook of our Inspections Department. We will set this public hearing for our next meeting, November 22nd, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 091121, request to set a public hearing for the removal of nine protected trees from 1796 Murray Hill Road as required by Tree Conservation Ordinance Number 2422, brought to us by the Grinnells, Ginnells, and Scott Cook. That one will also be set for our next meeting on November 22nd, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 101121, request to set a public hearing for the removal of six protected trees at 908 Shades Road as required by Tree Conservation Ordinance Number 2422, brought to us by Leslie Anastasia and Scott Cook of our Inspections Department. This one will also be set for our next meeting, November 22nd, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 111121, request to set a public hearing for consideration to rezone 1832 25th Court South from I-2 to NPD. Here's Trent Beasley, who's the owner and HBI LLC, to permit the renovation of an existing non-conforming single-family house. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of six to zero for favorable recommendation of the rezone and by our own Wyatt Pugh. This public hearing will be set for December 6, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. All right. 121121, request to advertise and set a bid date for the 18th Street Alley Improvements Project, brought to us by Cale Smith. I can address this a little bit. This is for the alley that's part of the 18th Street project. It's not actually an 18th Street alley, just so no one's confused, but it's part of that project. So, that's why it's being referred that way. We did not send this through committee because of timing. By doing this, we can go ahead and get this advertised and gain about three weeks on the project, which will be necessary for the rest of the 18th Street project. And we do have representatives of GMC here tonight if anyone's got any questions about it. But otherwise, that, we were looking to set that bid date for December 7th at 10:00 a.m. Is that right, Mr. Strickland?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have a quick question about it.
No problem. Who was the second? Mr. Gualtney?
I was.
Okay. So, we have a motion from Mr. Jones and a second from Mr. Gualtney. Ms. Gier?
Yes. So, I'm just wondering what area is being improved? Is this related to post office or what area?
It is. It's the area between the post office and the barbershop in Ed's Pet World. That alley's being, needs to be repaved and...
Related to rerouting of post office traffic?
Correct. That's all been part of this project. Yes.
Okay. Anything else or is that it?
It's that alley and I think there's an alley behind it that it's connected to, but yes, all of that is part of the same, same project.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero. So, that bid date will be set for December 7th at 10:00 a.m. and the advertising will go out tomorrow. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Appreciate y'all being here. All right. Next item, 131121, request for consideration of an ABC O20 Restaurant Retail Liquor License for Miranda Brothers Enterprise Inc., DBA Tacos Done Taco II located at 437 Green Springs Highway, Suite 141, brought to us by Melody Salter and Robert Brigitte. Mr. Gualtney, my understanding is we have letters of no objection that we've received from both police and fire?
That is correct.
Fantastic. So, I would entertain a motion as to having no, having no objection, am I saying that right? As to having no objection to the issuance of the license.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Gier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero. Next item, 141121, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of October 26, 2021 through November 8, 2021, brought to us by Robert Brigitte, our Finance Director, and Melody Salter, our City Clerk. Excuse me. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I reviewed the vouchers, had several questions. Ms. Melody answered several of them. A lot of them were related to the fire department, but I got everything answered. So, I would move to approve the vouchers from October 26 through today.
Second.
Through the 8th.
So, we have a motion from Mr. Jones, a second from Ms. Smith. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero.
Please, 174.
That's right. Yes. 21, that'll be Resolution 21174. All right. And our last item, 331021, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with LBYD for demolition of Citation Corp., brought to us by Berkeley Squires. This is an item that is, as I understand it, is already budgeted, but there is a timing issue because they have found asbestos. And so, we need to get this contract in place as quickly as possible.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I know what LBYD does. What are we having them do? Are they creating a plan for us?
They are, if I may, they're running the specs to let the bid and checking for asbestos on it.
To demolish the building.
To demolish.
Right. Which I think is a great idea. And I've been after Mr. Squires for a while to put some money in the budget to get rid of that building because I think it's an eyesore for our city and it's our property. So, I think this is a great idea. But, okay, I didn't understand what they were doing there, but makes sense.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
What is the address of the number of this building?
Can you give it to us one more time, Mr. Kendrick?
175.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. If not, then I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be 21175. All right. Which brings us to the end of the agenda. Well, I'll do it in mind at the end. Mr. Mayor, do you have any comments tonight?
Just a few. I just want to thank, again, the Chamber of Commerce and all the businesses for the wonderful holiday open house that Homewood had last week. And we all know that Mr. Squires is still recovering, but keep him in your thoughts as he is trying to come back day to day. He had his procedure last week, but just keep him in your thoughts and prayers as he gets back to work. And that's it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Mr. Gualtney?
Just when I thought I had a cleared agenda. I have another item added. So, Public Safety, I'll set it for 5:30? Is that good?
That's right.
Okay. I'll set Public Safety for 5:30 for 15 minutes. And I have no additional comments.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gualtney. Ms. Gier?
Arts Council met tonight and I'll just go ahead and announce a fun exhibit they're going to do in downstairs, first floor of City Hall for December. They are requesting any residents who want to highlight their tacky or beautiful Christmas lights and front yard decorations. They're going to take some pictures around town and select, select some residences to highlight for the Christmas holiday and frame those and put them up downstairs for December. And then, Counselor Smith, are you going to tell about the Lee Center meeting? Okay. So, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Alamon?
Yes, I want to briefly mention that Dr. Heath and Mrs. Coleman went to DC to accept the Blue Ribbon Award for Hawkins Elementary. And I just can't speak with more pride about the school and the educators that we have here at Homewood. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wolverton?
I don't see anything for new items for my agenda unless I'm mistaken.
Yeah, I think you guys did.
Yeah, there's one.
Which one?
You labeled something.
No, it's going to Special Issues. It's not mine.
They relabeled it.
Wait, wait, wait.
That's working the right of way.
Where's that one at?
It was added when it was added tonight.
Oh, I got you. Got you.
It's the, it's the...
All right. No, that's going to be a five-minuter. Yeah, I thought they didn't even need...
Mr. Pugh asked for that one to be added. He asked it to be on this one.
He did. For some reason, yeah, Mr. Smith, for some reason, there was a thought that it was...
Yeah. And we talked about it. I was there on the phone call today.
Right. So, I think what the issue was, was not really necessarily to approve the work in the right of way, but simply to bring the issue before us so that we could approve or not approve, so that we would know about it. Because it was, it was being done separate from the 18th Street project. So, just to let everyone know what was going on. But it may be that it needs to be rewarded as not permission to grant, permission to work in the right of way.
The guy comes up and today to pull a permit to begin to do the work. And so, we...
Yep. Mr. Gualtney?
Can we get a clarification of what he's doing in the right of way?
He's just putting, remember the conversation we had about putting a bus shelter on the 18th for the, for the Magic City?
Connector.
Connector. They found a spot. GMAC did the, GMC did the, Jane and Neil, is that right, Neil? Suggested locations for that bus stop and they were, we were connecting them with Kwiatangi. And so, they got that figured out. And then, they had their contractor who does the installation of the bus shelters come and pull his contract permit to put that up. But I think they have the right to use it. And it's just a matter, it's the discussion that we had about putting a shelter down there.
Right. So, that, that was the reason, that was the reason for putting it on the agenda was just so that they could come before us and explain what they're putting in.
Yeah. And they showed us a model. It looks like it's their brand-new model. It matches the bus. It's red. It's spiffy.
So, I don't know that...
It sticks out like a sore thumb on 18th Street.
No, it matches the Magic City Connector.
Just a million dollars. Brand's making new. It's great landscaping.
No, it's, no. Actually, there's a tree that is going to be, it really looks good.
I trust your judgment. I hope it's good.
That's why it's on the agenda.
We'll get the information at Public Works next week.
So, the item is just...
Just to get the information.
They're not asking for permission or anything else?
Well, they don't have to ask for permission.
Correct. So, it's not even an item that would go to council, correct?
In all likelihood.
I mean, could we, I mean, I have the picture. I can just send it to everybody if we want to get rid of this altogether. I mean...
Mr. President, you've lost control.
Clearly. I just don't know why we couldn't have addressed this during the damn construction. I mean, this, well, this would have been a fantastic item to assess.
Again, this was one reason that I thought it was, we're sending it to committee so that we can have this discussion. That's why we were doing it. We're not having it now.
Sure.
All right. So, Public Works set for, how long do you need?
5:45.
No, how long is Public Safety going to be? 15 minutes? Okay.
So, we're going to go 5:45 for no more than 10 minutes.
Andy, I'll send you the picture.
And Jane picked out the place. Jane's involved. She's totally involved.
10 minutes.
Okay.
And then, yeah, just wanted to thank everybody, especially Counselor Andrus, for putting together the first inaugural First Responders 5K. It was fun. I enjoyed the course.
You crushed it.
I don't know if I could put it that way, but I enjoyed the course. It was, it was a fun event. I thought we had a good...
What did he say?
He's, yeah.
In his age group, he crushed it. And Trista came in second or first?
Yeah. My wife, you know, stood me up just like she always does. So, she's phenomenal.
Show you versus stood you up?
Showed me up and stood me up. Yeah.
Maybe equally true.
Yeah. So, it was, it was great. I thought it was very well organized. I thought it went off without a hitch. And I think that that's hard to do on a first-time race. So, applause for all that you guys did to put that together and make it run efficiently. And the lady that won is 41 years old and ran like 16 minutes and...
1602.
16 minutes and two seconds.
She's an Olympic trial qualifier.
Well, clearly, because she spanked everybody out there. So, it was, it was miraculous. But yeah, enjoyed it. I thought, oh, the awards were fantastic, too. They were, for anybody that didn't get to see them, there were a little plaque with fire, police and fires, little coin logo. Yeah, challenge coins. So, it was a great event. Happy to see it. And thank you for everybody involved.
And President Wyatt, just to make sure, we are setting Public Works for 5:45?
5:45 for 10 minutes.
All right. Mr. Sims?
Thank you, Counselor Wyatt. So, I just wanted to report on the beautification board's meeting, which was actually today at noon. They approved two items. One is for additional Christmas trees in the downstairs area of City Hall that will also include nine, two nine-foot trees and two seven-foot trees. So, that'll pair well with what the Arts Advisory Council's doing with their framing of tacky sweaters or tacky decorations.
Well, it's tacky, well, it's not just tacky. It's your front yard decorations. And I failed to say, well, I've got the mic, to, if you'd like to submit your yard or a friend's yard, you can get in touch with the Arts Council via Facebook or Brian Collins, Brian Collins directly. But also, Meredith Drennan with, with the chamber, she's working with you guys, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, and so that'll, that'll be great. And also, we also approved an item today at the beautification board for the purchase of a twelve-foot menorah, so please stay tuned, because we will be doing a public lighting. We'll be scheduling that in the coming weeks for Hanukkah celebration in conjunction with our holiday celebration. Hanukkah this year is actually November twenty-eighth through December fifth, so maybe looking to see if we could possibly do something when we're all here on the twenty-ninth that coincides with our committees that evening, possibly...
Starting a little late.
Yes, start, possibly starting committee a little late in may, maybe five-thirty and possibly having a lighting at five. Just planting that seed out there. Well, more to come on confirming details, but excited about that opportunity this, this year as well. Thanks so much.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Finance at five, and I'm happy that we're all up here. I feel like we need a group hug, but that probably wouldn't be, that probably wouldn't be appropriate, but I think it's a year ago today that we were, we started this term. Is that right?
Yeah, I think it is.
So I think we've accomplished a lot in, in the year, and I think we're all kind of hitting our stride, and, and I always thank everybody up here for the work that, that has been done so far, and I look forward to the future. The football game, we got through the first round of playoffs, so we're headed Friday night playing Gardendale, so it's going to be, going to be a big one, so hope you can all come out to that. And then maybe sometime before my term ends, I'm, I'm going to see if we can put a bubble around Homewood and keep daylight savings time. Because this, this, this going, you know, getting dark at four-thirty is just not, not making me happy right now.
You just need to get up early.
Anyway, maybe we can do that. Mayor, can you look into that? Thank you. You can do anything. That's all I have.
Thank you for the memory of the anniversary. We're one year in, and everybody has a full term left.
That's right.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, I have a few things. So I'll set special issues for five fifty-five, and apparently everybody wants to take trees down in their yards, so I don't know. I'm going to... Five, yes, because he said he only needed ten minutes, so five fifty-five, and I guess I'll, I need, I probably do need thirty minutes, so puts me at six twenty-five ending. I need thirty-five minutes, that's true, just to make it even. And the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission is having a meeting tomorrow night at six P.M. at the Lee Center in the community room with the consultant from King Street, who is going to be conducting the Rosedale Historic Resurvey. That is open to anyone and all who want to come to hear her presentation. She's basically going to fill people in on exactly what it is that she's going to be doing, because she is going to be kind of wandering around the neighborhood. She's probably not going to start that work until after the holidays, because she needs, she doesn't need Christmas decorations in her pictures, so she's probably going to have to wait until after the beginning of the year to get started, but she's going to give everybody a timeline and kind of what it is that she's going to be doing for that project. So that is tomorrow night at six P.M. at the Lee Center. And echo Patrick's comments, the mayor's comments on the open house. It was very fun last Thursday night. Tons of people, the businesses that were opened just did a fantastic job of, of showing themselves off, and I could tell that people just were excited to be back out. So shop local for Christmas. I spent a whole lot of money and got some Christmas gifts taken care of. And also Jennifer and Paul's work on the race did come out of run retirement, and while I did not run it in twenty minutes or sixteen minutes, by the way, I was feeling really good about myself until she came sprinting past me on the way back, and I was only halfway done. I was like, awesome, this is going well for me. But I was very pleased with my time. I beat Chief Hill, just want to say that. He's not here tonight, but I did. And it was a really great race for a first-time 5K. It was fantastic. They raised a lot of money for a really good call, so that was fantastic. Yeah, the shirts are awesome also, and I think that is it. Yes, we had a Ward Four meeting right before council tonight. Randy Pittman from Sanford came, spoke to the residents. We talked about a bunch of different projects that are happening in Ward Four and throughout the city, and we are looking forward to continued action on all those items, so.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Nelms. All right. Thank you. Ms. Andrus?
Okay, we'll start by setting P and D for six twenty-five.
You probably have that tree ordinance to deal with, right?
No, we don't. It's off the agenda forever. Yay! Do have one tiny item that will not take long. We have paving going on in Ward Five from the Water Works, which has been really exciting. Rumson and Yorkshire have been milled, and Windsor's been milled, and so paving is coming, which has just been, that's been a really long time coming, too. I wanted to mention about the 5K. Thanks, you guys, for bringing that up. So Paul DiMarco, Janie Shelswell-White, who's also with the Homewood Police Foundation, and then myself, and then Jeff Martinez from the Track Shack. So that was the, the team, and anytime you can get, anytime you do anything with running, you've got to have the Track Shack involved. They are the best. They really are. And Jeff's the easiest person in the world to work with. And so Paul was a fundraising just machine, and Janie is just the most pleasant, lovely person to work with and just such a great attitude. And Sanford University brought in their athletes. They had fifteen athletes that showed up at six forty-five in the morning, just bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, smiles on their faces, and they just, whatever I wanted them to do, they would do. I handed each one a map and said, you're going to this corner, and you're going to that corner, and you're going to that corner. They're like, okay. And they went and stood on a corner for an hour and cheered the runners on and were our course marshals, and they came back and celebrated with us afterwards. And we had a goal, I know I told you guys, we had a goal of a hundred runners, because that would cover the expenses, and then we wanted to raise five thousand dollars for the Homewood Fire Department, and then five thousand dollars for the Homewood Police Foundation. We went into race day with a hundred and sixty-one runners, and we had over twenty-seven thousand dollars. So after that, after race day, after race day, the people who did our banner said, you can have that for free, because y'all, we just, you got such a good cause. And then Kelly Siebels from Siebels brought us another sponsor, so we made thirty thousand dollars. So each department gets fifteen thousand dollars, just straight up fifteen thousand dollars. So I want to thank HPD, because we didn't ask them if they wanted us to do this for them, and they did, and they came out and they, you know, helped direct traffic. And then HFD, again, we did not ask them, and they did our water stop, and, you know, they were so much fun to work with and for, and everybody loves them, and we're just so happy that we got to do something for them, because they all work so hard for our city and, you know, we were just, anyway, it was a great event. Like you said, we really were just, it's so important to have a really big first year, so we can just build on that success, and we're really thrilled, so. Oh, yeah, they were great. Matt and Chief Hill and, you know, and then Brandon was out there. Yeah, he was heading, that's right, he was working at the finish line, and anyway, it's just really, it was a fun morning. And the little kids that came out with their little toy trucks and their little toy, yeah, yeah, it was just adorable. It was just absolutely adorable. And then I just wanted to mention one more thing. We did a panel discussion. The Greater, Foundation of Greater Birmingham sort of highlighted our council coalition, which was the renamed Council Roundtable, and also the Mayor's Association, which Mayor McCluskey is active in. And so the idea of the panel was regional cooperation, of course, which is where we're all in favor of. And so Buddy Choak from the Mayor's Association was there, and then Steve Ammons from the Jefferson County Commission was there, and then me and Jesse Matthews from Bessemer. And we really had a great discussion for an hour about a lot, a lot of the things that we all talk about all the time, and we're talking about with our counterparts, you know, stormwater runoff and things that start up in, you know, up higher up in the county and end up in Homewood. I mean, you know, it was a really great discussion, and I'll send you all the link. TC said he was, he was in the audience, and he really thought it was a great discussion, so I'll send that to you. But a lot of great things that are happening in this area, and, and all of us are right there in the middle of all of it, and it's just really exciting stuff, so. Anyway, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harden?
Can't imagine I can follow that. I do want to thank those, Ms. Andrus, and those who were on the, this finally getting the tree ordinance done. I know that's been going on for a long time. And also, the, all the work that Ms. Andrus put into that run was amazing, because I think they thought they were going to get ten thousand dollars. Yeah, so anyway, thirty, three times, if I ever do three times my goals, I'm going to really feel good. But, and, you know, we all sit, sit up here and try and make the best decisions we can for our city, and I'm always grateful for everybody. You know, we may not always agree on it, but this is, it's tough sometimes, but I think we're all trying to do the best for the city and make the right decision, so thank y'all.
Thank you. All right. Just a reminder of the calendar coming up. So next week will be committees. We are meeting unless people, people's plans have changed for Thanksgiving Week, and we have six of us. We will have a full council meeting on the twenty-second. Then we will have committees on November twenty-ninth. Then we'll have council the following week on the sixth, committees on the thirteenth, council on the twentieth, and all of that will allow us to take the week in between Christmas and New Year's off. So the twenty-seventh, we will not have a meeting, but we will be meeting every week between now and then to, so that we get to that point. So... December seventh.
It's December what?
Seventh. All right, so just wanted to remind everyone of that. We will be back in touch about the menorah when we set next, when we set our next committee meetings.
Oh, yeah, and thanks to Kent Haynes, because he's the one who brought that to us.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so we'll be back in touch about that, but I don't think it should be a big deal to just start our committees a little bit later that, that day, so. Yeah, so I appreciate that, because that's, we're, we're getting off on our council dates from what we normally do in a month, so. Right. So why don't we go ahead, if, if someone wants to make that motion to approve those dates, as I just set them out?
I would move to approve the amended meeting dates.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero. And is that a resolution? Right, so it'll be twenty-one one seventy-six.
Okay. I'll type one up and just get y'all to sign it.
Sure. All right. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.